Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the November 18th, 2014 Village of New Paul's Planning Board Meeting. I am the Planning Board Chair, my name is Maurice Whitehead. Other members present this evening are Liz Harsho, Michael Zierler, and Rich Stephens. Our attorney is George Rodenhause. Present in the audience is our Village Board Liaison, Tom Rocco. Our planner, Brad White, is not able to be here this evening. She may come later, but now she won't. And I will tell you that the agenda tonight has two items related to applications. One is a pre-application meeting, which we will have after the meeting for PD 1408, which is Mr. Caffrey's application for construction of a two-family building on Pencil Hill Road. We also have some minutes and some other business to do after the application-related items are dealt with. So, Mr. Caffrey, come on up.
Good evening. Chair of the Board. If I might, I can open up with kind of just a quick refresher. My name is Michael Leslie, I'm the consulting engineer for the project. And with me is Mr. Caffrey.
Yep.
Mr. Stein, our counsel fortunately is ill tonight, so he couldn't be with us tonight. But he presses his orders and says, "Oh." We were here before the board last month relative to, let's call it, our initial application specific to this proposal. We made a brief presentation at that time. Effectively, what it is, is a proposed two-family dwelling with a single access point coming in off of Pencil Hill Road. At the time, I think we were proposing a total of 15 parking spaces, I believe. Water, sewer service, if that makes sense. There was some input provided by the board. There was a letter we'd received from the village consultant attorney relative to the project. And it was asked based upon the fact it was considered an incomplete application. You've got to go back, address some of those comments, take a look at those, see what you've been doing, and resubmit. So, within that time for a period, timely, we resubmitted an updated set of plans and categorically went through each one of those items that were discussed with the board, as well as provided by the consultants. So, we're here tonight to once again discuss the project. We have made a few modifications since the last time you've seen it. I guess I will point them out briefly. We, again, initially, were proposing a few more parking spaces than we are currently detailing. The code, and I know there's some comments relative to the attorney's letter regarding how many spaces, but it seems that eight is the required parking spaces relative to this application. We currently show a total of 11. It is our experience based upon this particular type of use that when you have them, certainly more parking spaces always help. That being said, there's always a balance relative to pervious services, aesthetics, so we get that. So, one thing we'd like to work out tonight is getting a feel from the board relative to the parking. If it's eight, and we're not going to do any more than eight, okay. Then we'll have eight the next time around. But we want to get that locked in, if that's still possible. We do now show a refuse enclosure, garbage enclosure, I guess they call it, the north end of the site. We also, for maintenance purposes, we show a small shed in this location as well. So, that was added to the plan. We provided a significant more detail relative to some landscaping and some other things. As you know, we have an existing workhorse that resides on the parcel. We've done it in 10. This is my first time on the board as chairman. Try to get him to stay away from the refuse of 20-foot setback going from the stream. And that's largely what we worked this around. So, that and providing a significant amount more detail is effectively what we're presenting to you tonight. We are in receipt of some emails and some comment letters from the consultants. And if possible, once we get through maybe board discussion, I know there was also a site visit with one of the board members, so we can discuss that. Go through those in categorical fashion, so we can make sure that we're coming away from this with something, so that when we come back, we know we're a little further ahead.
Okay. So you did mention that you've got some copies of emails, and can you tell me what it is that you've got some, you know, where? Well, I assume that's what you have.
Yeah, I think that's my number, but I have to tell you that's my number and David's.
Okay, good. I think that's all I have. Okay. Michael, you did a site visit?
I did.
Would you like to tell us what you learned or saw there?
First, thank you very much, Guy, for the opportunity to do it. It was very helpful. So, yeah, I went out Sunday and we walked the property, and I was able to see approximately where on the property the building is proposed and where the curb cut would be for the driveway, as well as the placement of the two structures down near the street. And I had one idea that we spoke about, which was someone out of left field, which was whether or not, given the problems with the traffic, whether it might be possible to actually work with south side to come in and create a right-of-way through that way. But I understand the legal difficulties in doing that, but I also saw on sight that it's extremely steep on that end and would be problematic to do that.
Kind of down in hill design?
Yeah. And so therefore avoiding the whole pencil hill, water street. But it seems highly impractical, given the terrain.
I also think there's a site distance restriction looking, because it elevates the dislocation.
Yeah.
I thought there was a site distance restriction, vertical site distance.
Oh, okay. So, in any event, it was worth seeing whether that was feasible. I did talk about, we did talk about whether or not it would be possible to bring the building down to the front and bring the parking to the rear. Mr. Caffrey expressed some of the difficulties in doing that, and I can see that it's largely due to setback issues. And, but I noticed that our planner's letter also discusses that. That's pretty much all I have to say at this point. Thanks.
As I mentioned, our planner, Director of Planning Brenda couldn't be here this evening. You got the email that she sent to us dated November 14th?
That one, that one I got given to tonight, so I haven't had the time to go through it, but I think you have.
Right. Okay. Since she's not here, I'll quickly read this for everybody's benefit, so we'll see what Brenda said. We have a couple of other documents also. So she wrote on the 14th that the application's to build a two-family house as a student rental on this parcel. From a planning perspective, it's unfortunate that the dumpster and parking area proposed for the front of the parcel, and the house is proposed to be set furthest back from the road. The applicant should consider swapping those elements, house in front, and so on. Landscaping plan shows trees and shrubs in front of the house, as well as trees surrounding the outbuildings, but no landscaping is shown in front of the proposed 11-spot parking area. Considering that the proposed parking area appears larger in surface area than the house itself, the board may want to require landscaping to be located between Pencil Hill Road and the parking area. The intersection is a challenging one with problems with drainage causing running water in the summer and ice in the winter. The applicant's proposed silt fencing and stone line swales to combat potential problems. The board may request that the village engineer review the site plan to ensure that this is sufficient to not cause further problems. Also pertinent to the intersection, the proposed driveway location seems a bad one. Considering the probability of multiple cars coming in and out of the driveway on a regular basis, placing it so close to the center of the intersection would in essence create a fifth street here. Instead, the driveway should be placed as far from the intersection as possible, which could work well if the parking area were pushed to the south side of the parcel as well. Inside the home bedrooms three and two on the first and second floor are very large with partitions and double closets that are unnecessary for individual bedrooms. The proposed partitions should be eliminated as each proposed double closet, and each proposed double closet needed to one. In the basement, the additional kitchens and rec rooms seem to make this floor an additional unit, which is not what is proposed in the application. The applicant should adjust his application to reflect a multifamily unit if the additional unit is designed. So that's from Brad. There was a notice of determination dated November 12th, which I guess you got from Mark Jaffrey?
Yeah, I wasn't sure. I did receive it. I don't, the notice of determination relative to the building per an application was submitted?
I believe it's with respect to the application itself.
Site plan, application.
Yes.
Yeah. I read it, I didn't see it. The answer is I saw. I'm not particularly sure. Just leave me the site plan, that's why we're here.
Basically references to sections of the code that apply.
As to why.
Right. And we also have an email from our engineer, Dave Klauser, which I asked him to do a brief review of the application, so that we can minimize delays, which would result in extra meetings and so on before it can be referred to the county, and so on. And Dave did provide, Dave, could you come up here and discuss what you saw? Maybe you can move over a bit so Dave can have that there?
No, sorry. Took just a really brief look at the plans. I saw one thing that the county would require, site lighting. I don't know what's being proposed on the site lighting that needs to be shown.
I'm sorry, Dave, were you provided a copy of just the plans, or am I complete submitted with a cover letter and everything else?
Everything.
Okay. Because I did indicate in there that we weren't proposing lighting, but I wanted to make sure you had everything.
Okay. So a lot, I mean, that parking, you're not proposing any lighting for safety or whatever there?
There's an existing light that sits out on the street here that provides a certain amount of lighting here. And I did talk to Guy about it relative to like some, maybe some sconce lighting on the building, okay? So that's, we can certainly detail that, all right? But that was really the extent of it in terms of, no, not anything more than that.
The dumpster, I thought, was a problem because you're going to be accessing that by using the intersection down there to be able to get into that. It's going to require a maneuvering of the refuse truck to back in and do the pickup and take all traffic in that intersection.
Certainly not an optimal situation. I get it. I guess two things, I did speak to Guy about it. As currently, I guess, as it currently exists, they come and pick up very early in the morning. That doesn't resolve the fact that the rear end of the dumpster is sticking out of the intersection. But if it really becomes an issue that we can't find a spot on this site for it, and it's becoming a very tight site relative to everything you lay out, then we'll just go with standard, you know.
Yeah, I'll just bring it, we can get rid of the dumpster.
But we'll evaluate that and respond to that, of course.
Okay. There's a couple of issues on the EAF, and I know George also picked up on those. I just have them numbered here as 3C, 17A, 17, 17A, items 8A and B, and number 14. Those three weren't answered. I think 3C, as I remember right, shows that the total acreage owned and controlled is .85 acres. I think that's a typo, because this property is .75 acres.
Yeah. It's part of this too, regards to the EAF. The initial submission that was made, I think Guy actually wrote it down and actually filled out the EAF literally as part of the submission at that point. So, it deserves some cleaning up. So certainly after, yes, it's a fact that, you know, it needs to be a little tighter.
Sure. Easy. The biggest problem that I saw on the plan was the drainage. There's no drainage analysis. I see a 15-inch culvert under the lot that's taking kind of pass-through flow from the swale above. I don't know how that was sized. I know above is pretty developed. I'm expecting there's some pretty serious flow there. In the ditch or in the stream that runs through there, we've got two 24-inch culverts coming in, and now another 15 coming in, and it's picked up by a 24 down here. So I think we need some kind of analysis on that. I'm sure we do.
Yeah. And in fact, I've spoken to Guy about this. What happens is, at least in terms of off-site, it's what comes there now. We were kind of, just from the board's general perspective, it kind of runs down through a ditch and makes its way into a stream through here. We're picking it up, diverting it, getting it under our site, and then out. So, I think we can certainly provide an analysis, okay? And again, part of this is making sure the board is comfortable with the layout. There's some talk tonight in some of the letters, they're moving things back and forth. But the next step on this is to provide an analysis to show that we're not having an impact, you know, obviously on downstream drainage facilities.
Did you skip over your comment about showing neighborhood development?
That's coming up here.
That's coming up, yeah. Topography too, because I don't, does this keep going uphill here?
No, it flattens out.
In terms of drainage, I guess.
That will definitely be shown as part of the drainage analysis. We've got to know what off-site is coming in, show that, model that. I'm curious of whether the DPW has any issues down there with the intersection and with that culvert, or just any drainage issues there that need to be addressed or looked at as part of this, making sure that we're not doing any damage to what may not already be the ideal situation. There's no stormwater management. The code has a provision that detention is required unless there's a really good reason for it, and that the board can decide that it could be waived if the village planner or the village engineer says that it's not necessary. In this case, you're certainly going to be generating more drainage. And what I see in the grading is it's being funneled down the driveway and into the street. We need to do some type of detention.
Yeah, what we'll do is, as part of this next step, we'll certainly provide an analysis to show that, because that's certainly something that's required, and, you know, that's not something that we're against providing.
The village is a New Pauls, or the village is a MS4 community also, so we've got to be very, we've got to consider this.
Room one.
Please don't ask me the asking question.
Mis간 separate storm sewer system.
George did it.
Does that mean that that regulation requires a stormwater management plan for this particular project?
The DEC will just require a erosion and sediment control plan.
Right.
Village's code will require a drainage analysis on this. Copy of the easement, I'd like to take a look at that. And again, as George had mentioned, show the improvements on the adjacent property. That'll have to be done as part of the drainage analysis. I'm also curious about Pencil Hill Road, whether a right-of-way dedication would be requested with the site plan. Right now, the property line's in the middle of Pencil Hill Road. I don't know how the DPW has been dealing with those. It looks like there is dedication on beyond this from the way the property lines are shown here.
So what do we know? Is it a dedicated town road?
It's not shown. It's shown as a prescriptive right-of-way, the way the surveyor has shown it there.
Yeah.
And I guess the position is, is that certainly this is the situation that likely has always been, and they've maintained the road. With this, if there's a situation where either it's a right-of-way, or it's, you know, an easement that needs to be provided to the village in order to ensure that, you know, that continued maintenance, so what can happen? Not opposed to it, certainly as long as it doesn't affect, you know, the outcome of the application, because a lot of it rides on the area that we have, and so forth and so on. So if we take this right-of-way, reduce this area, and obviously has implications in terms of what we can do, and it will certainly have an implication on the proposal we have here. So again, we're certainly willing to work with the village and provide them what they want, but certainly not to the peril of the proposal, so.
Well, so should we speak with TPW, or is it Rich Williams?
I'm not sure how the village has been dealing with that. It would be the village board that would take the right-of-way dedication, the offer, if they were interested. I'm not sure who's been working with that.
Could we go back over this? I'm not sure I'm following. Are you worried about losing square footage for density calculation?
Sure.
So you've included it out to the center line of the road?
That's what you want.
Yeah. And I don't think there's anything in our code that requires you to take that out.
No.
Some codes do, but...
I'm just thinking about maintenance for the village.
You mean if it's dedicated?
If they ever improve that, or need to do anything in there. If there's dedicated right-of-way, they don't have to get permission.
Right.
You're saying that if they do dedicate it, it doesn't alter their, the boundary lines and therefore the square footage?
No, it would. If it was dedicated to the town, it would change the boundary line, but I don't see it as necessary. I'm not following what you're saying, Dave. Excuse me, but in terms of maintain, maintenance of the road or maintenance of the property?
Maintenance. I'm thinking if there's ever a ditch or in the future curbs, or this is widened, they wouldn't have to go to the property owner to get any permission to do that. They'd be able to do what they needed to do with a dedicated portion of the right-of-way, if there was an offer of dedication. It looks like, just by the property line shown here, that Pencil Hill on, up Pencil Hill has been dedicated.
That'll have to find out.
There's a survey map that's referenced there that may have information on that. The other issue that I saw, which I may have an old code, but what I'm seeing is, this is a three-story building, and there's two and a half stories allowed in the district. Basement is counted as a story according to the code.
That is correct.
I can show you the definition in the code I've got in the lab. It says the basement is counted as a story.
It's a walkout basement, right?
Correct. With 50% of the...
It's more than 50% below grade?
50% of the bottom floor is right.
Below grade. It's below grade. I've got one of those myself.
And we just went through this on the site.
It's not a basement.
Although we weren't here, we just went through this on the site above top. On, I think on both instances, we had that requirement, and it exists there. I didn't see that comment in your letter, Dave. Was that something you came back through?
I saw that Monday morning. That wasn't in the letter.
Heck, with the Beelucky Building, I think we had to alter that, because they were filling up the grade to make the basement. It'd be below grade.
And this is a 2011 vintage here, but it says that a basement shall be counted as one story in determining the height of the building in stories.
Where are you, Dave?
I'm in the definition, section 212-5.
Which word? Basement?
Yeah.
One that I have says, "That's a building which is partly below grade, and has more than half its height measured from floor to ceiling above average established curb level or finished grade of the ground destroying the building. A basement shall be counted as one story determining the height of a building in stories."
That's the sentence that I'm saying there.
But the basement has more than half above ground, right? More than half of its height is above ground, about the established curb level or finished grade. So, are you saying yours is less than that?
No, ours is more, and we provide an elevation.
More above grade or below grade?
Below grade.
If it's below grade, then it's not a basement.
Right, because it would be sticking up. So what happened is, in our elevation group, we buy and actually show grade lines and show that as part of this, the level we made, that's what we're talking about, the building plans.
If those building elevations on the side aren't accurate with the grading on the plan either, I noticed that. There's also a height there that's above the 30 feet that's shown on the building plan. That's that that I have. It's a dimension that says from average grade to the ridge of the roof is 31 foot 3 inches, which would be either a variance.
This is the height restriction?
Regrading.
35 feet is the height limit, right?
I have 30 in this vintage.
Two and a half stories are 30 feet.
Yeah.
Two and a half stories, 30.
Two and a half for 30 feet, I saw that. Page 212, 24.
I think in that case, we can, we have some flexibility in adjusting grade to make sure, the intent is to make sure that that works, and that's the best we can hope for.
It's really what I had. I took a look at the next set, and really go through it with the site plan requirements and the code.
Yeah, you know, again, as this proceeds, I would appreciate, you know, just to kind of crack categorically going through everything, so that way I can respond to each and every succeeding submission. And all's I have in the email now, I broke down some of the other comments we could just come up with tonight, but that would help us.
Well, the new issue is the height of the building and the number of floors. So that's a grading issue for you.
Right.
You can show what that median, that mean grade is to show your calculations on that?
Thanks, David. Do you have any other questions, Mr. Klauser?
I just, I assume next time we're going to get a full review, so that'd be great.
Rich, any questions, Dave, or?
Formulating. I mean, one question I do have is, how much purview do we have over the building itself? I mean, Brad mentioned the room designs, and here we're talking about elevations. Do we, as a planning board, have any say-so? And, I mean, we're talking about design standards at the last meeting, but we're not at that point yet.
We have, we can look at the elevations. I'm not sure how we get into the interior of the building unless it becomes a compliance issue with density, with drilling units. We have to make sure there's not excess of drilling units. And I guess one of her comments was that the recreation area looks kind of like an additional bedroom.
Right, that's what it was, recreation.
That's a legitimate issue, but I think the rest of them are recommendations, as far as partitions and so on.
I mean, when we do restaurants and all that, we count, we want to see the floor flags, we want to count parking places.
We can see the board, yeah. Seats and tables and so on, but not residential. Michael, do you have any?
No, nothing, David. Thanks.
Liz?
No.
I do want to mention, I neglected to also acknowledge that Brogan Rose O'Donnell is our secretary. She's here this evening. And also that John Litten, our fifth member of the board, is absent this evening. Okay, David, thank you very much. Okay, David, thank you very much. And we'll probably, I'll speak with you tomorrow. Did you want to hang around to talk about that other?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. Okay, thanks. Okay, George, would you like to, do you have any other remaining issues?
I think, I think they've all been covered. Parking, we have to come back to parking and talk about whether to have either of them spaces.
Yeah.
Not mine.
Okay.
We know we need these, we reached out to that and tried to get a copy of it. He's meant to be sure there's no restriction in it. The twenty-foot setback from the stream is absolute. I'm just looking at it again. No driveway, no parking, et cetera, could be within that twenty feet, just that, so that it's almost like a use issue, so. That cannot, the idea of trying to have a pipeline or something going through it to get to the other side or to have a driveway across it, which would get rid of the intersection problem, is unfortunately not available.
Right, that would be great if you could.
Yeah.
And I understand that, but, you know, and I will certainly acknowledge that this is not the most optimal location for this driveway entry, but we're kind of limited relative to the stream and the site distance and the grades along the frontage of the parcel.
Yeah. I stormwater comments, but the same as Dave's and the short EAF concerns Dave, so you have those comments if you want to revise the EAF next time.
Yeah, we'll do that. The only, the only thing that I've just, in terms of that letter that I had highlighted here was I know that the accuracy of the determination of the mean high watermark, I could not find in the code the definition of what that is.
A mean high watermark?
Right. So we, right now, I mean, the, the, the stream is, is a trickle, certainly during larger storms, it runs higher. This is actually a pretty wide swath which we have run down there here. We're gonna have to provide us some guidance there because having the location in that twenty-foot setback, as mentioned in your letter, we're twenty-one feet away with edge of pavement, which meets code. That moves around a bit, then we're.
Yeah, I hadn't, I hadn't seen the property, so I raised it not knowing whether it's an issue or not. Dave, do you have a feeling about that? I mean, certainly with DEC, there's some definitions of bank and so on.
And banks and stuff.
Yeah, but mean high watermark is, I would assume, you know, hydrologically determined over time.
On the property there, that flattens out, is that right, Mike? The stream is, doesn't have the bank that's on the other side. I'm curious on where that water comes to in heavy rain.
Yeah, I, again, this is on a pointy scale, we're probably showing about a five-foot swath, you know, variable for there in terms of the elevation. In terms of the absolute height, you know, I think what we could do is, as part of our analysis, drainage analysis, determine during particular design storms whether it ends up in that meh end up. So let's, let's leave it at that, at least to give us some guidance.
Yeah, if it's not well-defined topographically, it's gonna be difficult to know where the mean high watermark is. We'll have to reach some agreement on that and Dave can be involved in that consideration.
Okay? So do you have any other, you had mentioned that you wanted, before you left tonight, you wanted some, something else. Could you restate that?
Well, I think what I want to make sure is, is we're gonna move forward on, on some heavier design-related items if it's requested. I'd like to get an idea from the board that we're moving in some kind of, some kind of direction relative to the site layout. Well, one of the things that's gonna issue here is, is the parking counts. Eight's minimum, we showed eleven, we originally showed fifteen. Is this eleven fast factory or would we like to see that? Because that's, we're just, the next time we come in, that's what we're kinda.
Rich, what do you think?
We always need parking. We always need parking. The problem is paving that parking. You're gonna run into lot coverage problems even, no?
We're at twenty-one and change, we're a lot up to thirty percent, so we have some flexibility relative to the impervious coverage.
Okay. I mean, my feeling is, you know, the more parking, the better. But it's important to be able, that parking be able to get out of the road safely and that people passing by that parking are safe. And where it dumps out at the bottom of Pencil Hill Road like that, there isn't any other way to clean that up, huh?
Right, I'm on my list.
I'm gonna look again.
One thing that, that we went over, that I think is relevant, there's a stop sign right here. Right before where this curb cut is, there's a stop sign, everybody's gotta stop. So that in itself gives us, as we discussed, you know, a break there because they have to stop. So everybody's stopping before they enter this intersection and particularly the stop sign is probably twenty feet from where this curb cut is, twenty-five feet. So, I mean, that's, that's an advantage, I think, I think that's a safety advantage for everybody because people have to stop before they come down here anyway, so.
Michael?
No, I agree, we were looking at that. I had also suggested that if we can define, I mean, mo- all of the properties down there, as you look around, basically the road and the places where people park just run together. There's no curbing, there's no great distinction between them, which is unfortunate, I think, because it creates a, a kind of an aesthetic sense as well as perhaps some safety issues. But given the consistency there, it was hard for me to argue that, because I did talk about, well, it might be beneficial to do some curbing and other definitions that help to offset this, but nobody else around there is doing it, so it might be a problem.
What's the problem?
To ask this particular applicant, when none of the other properties around there have any distinction between the roadway and where their property starts and cars park and so forth.
This is the sidewalk.
No sidewalks, no curving.
No, I mean, but the same thing is true, we, we now require sidewalks in residential.
Yeah.
Right? So even though the neighboring properties don't have sidewalk, we still require it.
Okay.
So, but anyhow, okay.
One thing, and I, and I, this goes against what we were talking about, but I wanted to ask Dave. I remember there was an applicant in the town some years ago, who I think you worked with, who wanted to build on the other side of a stream and you worked with them to design a box culvert and a bridge over that, or at least you.
About Niffens?
Yeah.
Niffens thing, that was in the village. Niffens Bridge?
No, that's in the town.
That was in the town at the time.
Oh, I thought at the time it was.
It was in the town.
Okay. Now it's in the village.
But I don't know if that, if it turns out that it's preferable to pull the driveway further up the hill, is that, is that an option for us to consider or is that off the table, given what you were saying?
That's certainly, I mean, you could put a box culvert then to contain that stream, I'm sure.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know that it's ideal, I didn't think it was a great idea back when Floyd was doing it, but I've seen it subsequently. I guess it's designed in such that it doesn't really impede the flow of, that's, that's the objective, right? It doesn't impede the flow of the stream the way you designed the shape and size of it.
You even put stream bottom inside the box culvert to let the critters through.
Okay.
But then you have a bridge over the stream, is that the answer?
Yeah, effectively, you have a roadway over the stream that is supported by the box culvert.
But again, you'd have to pierce these twenty-foot setbacks.
That's correct.
We don't have a permit for that.
They don't have permits for that.
Okay. Okay, is that a distinction? Well, no, but that, I don't know what the town's setbacks are from streams. Maybe they don't have them.
The wetlands law now has some, but at that time it didn't.
They didn't, okay, so there's the difference. All right, so then that's off the table. Okay, thanks.
Liz? I've got one question which goes back to some of Bren's comments about the additional kitchens and rec room in the basement and the partitions and, and the fact that this is a two-family house and eleven parking spaces or fifteen as originally proposed. It looks like more than a two-family house, it looks more like a multifamily house. And I don't know what our, what we do about that now or if we can ever do anything about that, but Bren's comments and the look of it, the feel of it seems like more than a two-family house. Is, is there any?
Can I see that?
Multifamily is a special permanent.
Right.
It's the only difference. Two families are permitted, principal permanent use, and multifamilies are special permanent.
Right. But I was, I was raising the issue of what, the, the impact on the area is gonna be a lot different if it's multifamily compared to two-family, from my perspective, with whatever, eleven spaces or more and I don't know how many, how many bedrooms there will be, how many people will be living there. So that was my question about the, the design of the building. We've seen other areas where buildings are shown on plans as having a partition or something like that, but it's really something that gets taken down right away and all of a sudden it's a, it's extra bedrooms in a, in a, in a building. And here it looks like, from outward appearances anyhow, it looks more like a multifamily. As of now, there's not much, we don't have to discuss anything now, but I'm just wondering what, how that impacts what we say about parking, whether if we say eight spaces, that makes it more likely to be used as a, as, as it's initially, as it's proposed to be used.
Parking spaces just go by number of bedrooms.
Right.
So, I don't know, since you've kind of matched out the number of bedrooms.
Right, and in, in this, you know, it makes statements, in the basement, additional kitchens and rec rooms seem to make this floor an official unit. Again, unit count is based upon bedroom count, it's like a flaw in the code, so, you know, we can have three bathrooms in there, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. That's, that's why, you know, so everything goes back based upon bedroom count, which goes into the area calculations and all that kind of stuff. I understand your concern regarding parking, so we would like more parking, if you want. The eight, then we'll give you the eight. Certainly like more, but if you'd like one or the other, so we know what we're doing.
Could I address that?
Sure.
I would comment. I didn't read it the same way when I was looking at the floor plan. I, I think, given the intended use, if there are eight bedrooms and there are eight parking spaces, then there is really no parking for visitors. And given the intended use, one can expect that there'd be visitors and I'd rather have people parking off the street than on that street or down close to that street. And given, when we walked around, given what's intended for the site, whether it's in this configuration or some other one where things get moved around, a lot of that parking that's currently down right on the street or that open space is gonna go away. And so the really, people who come to visit are gonna either have to park on the grass or in the road. So I think a couple of.
I'm sorry, I missed that, what's gonna go away?
So right now, if you go down to that area in front of, just off the, the, what would you call it? The, the street frontage portion on Water Street, Pencil Hill, just past the stop sign on Water Street, is a relatively flat area that is, got gravel in it, I think, or something, and people in that area occasionally park there. I'm not sure, I guess some of it is, you own that, so some of it is approved parking by you and others just people who park there.
Yeah, people who can park near.
When the site gets developed, where the dumpster is proposed to go in the shed, much of that area would go away. So the only place people could park if they were not residents at this proposed develop, at, for this proposed house, would be to park on the street or the grass, and I don't think that's a good idea. So I'm, I, a couple of extra spaces, I think, is, is.
Right, so are we saying that that parking, that, you, you were using that when there was some issue on the property, your original buildings? There was some, something going on up there that tenants had to park down below?
Yeah, sometimes they would just park up there because there was ice up there or whatever, for whatever reason. Sometimes he'd bring up, very good point, sometimes even his guests park in the, in the parking lot and, you know, they will force to park down below.
Right.
So.
So the parking that's there now on, on the street that was, I think it was dirt, I don't even know if it was.
It was gravel, yeah.
So you're saying that that's, that's gonna be gone?
It, it looks like from the site that that would largely be taken up by the driveway, the dumpster.
This is basically existing parking now.
Those two spaces.
What happens is, there's, and as part of this, there's a large expanse of shale gravel, which people parked on prior to, I didn't mean the purchasing. I mean, I'd been there buying, there's always been cars in there, you know? I don't know if it's from across the street or whatever it may be, so, you know, as part of this, and, you know, we've detailed, well, we have this wide expanse here, and quite frankly, it's not real traffic to look at. Part of what's going on here is we're defining these areas of entry now, so we don't have this wide expanse where people just roll and park wherever, wherever they want. Define, and then these other areas, you know, maybe the reference enclosure, which sounds like it's gonna go away and shit. I mean, these are grassed areas, everything's gonna be landscaped and treeed, so at the end of the day, we're hoping it's gonna be looking a lot better than what it looks like today, which is not so hot.
Well, there's also a safety issue with cars backing out of that area, it's kind of ugly.
Yeah, all this now, it's, it's.
But this, I think what Mike's alluding to is this kind of takes that away because people won't, will be able to drive out now. Instead of having to back out like this, they're gonna drive right out, you know, there's a stop sign here, they'll come here, boom, they'll come here, boom, they'll come here, boom.
It's just, it's more defined, you know, and certainly, if you, if you look at the calculations, and I understand impervious and it's wooded areas, and I know they pointed out in the letter, but at the end of the day, if you take a look at the, the green space, because right now against the stream, this is, this is all shale material, it's kind of, you know, the thought is just to pull that back, landscape it, tree, you know, I mean, if we want more landscape, I mean, it's gonna provide a natural buffer, which I think the intent of the code was, was provided for. That's what this, this plan does, you know, and I understand it's not optimal, we also have to build in parking spaces, but if you, if you take a look at the area of the, the shelled parking area as compared to here, actually, there's more area here now that's got that kind of cover than will after compared to building and pavement.
Well, what I would like to see, I think that that area for parking is bad for.
This or this?
The, what's there now, the, the shelter, whatever that is. So if, if the new plan would show that be gone with either planting or whatever you're gonna do, the driveway certainly would, would take that out, then I'd be more inclined to say that the eleven spaces might, might be more required. Yes, David?
Just say that stormwater management might take a space or two also before it's over.
Okay.
Depending on what kind of practices used.
Okay.
The other thing I just wanted to refer to was the basement. So my understanding is you've got a duplex and each side is more or less the same, so you've got two bedrooms on the upper floor, a bedroom on the first floor and a bedroom in the basement. You also have what appears to be a rec room and, and I guess the question is the sort of the kitchen area that's in the basement. As a concern, you don't show a stove down there of any sort, you show a sink and a refrigerator.
Yeah, but that's how I intend it.
So I'm assuming that's to make, so I didn't see that as a, as a kitchen, I saw that as more of a recreation room with a place to have drinks and a place to clean up and so forth. It's attached to the rec room, sort of à la nineteen fifties ranch houses with their finished basements and wet bars and that kind of thing. So that was my interpretation of it, but I guess the question is being clear that that is the use intended going into the future and not some kind of conversion that's gonna happen later that's gonna make it a completely separate.
What control would we have of that?
Well, that I.
It gets inspected every year.
That would be up to the building inspector, right? To make sure that, that that's for real and that, that they're not sticking hot plates and putting a range or something.
They have annual inspections and that's, that's what's happening on top right now, so.
So I'm, I don't know that we can or should take action tonight to say we're okay with eleven over, oh, we want eight. But I think with, with respect to Dave's comment, that we might have to go down to eight or nine based on the stormwater review. I'd, I'd say it's an open, open question. I don't know the, is there something else we can or should do now, George?
I can't think of any actions you can take. It's not really a complete application yet.
Right.
I'm not, I'm, listen, at this point, I'm not looking for action.
Yeah, no, I.
I'm looking for.
No, but what I'm saying is.
So I don't go tripping around the next time we're here next month, you know?
Well, I think the complete application would be a great step so that we can get to the county, get their comments, get whatever other reviews are necessary by DPW or village engineer so that we can move forward with it.
In terms of complete application, what I'm coming to find out relative to the door. village, you'd see the complete application is basically almost going through the entire site plan, details, studies, soup to nuts, right, almost to the end. Is that kind of where we're, what, what we're looking for?
Yes, right.
Okay, 'cause that's, you know, some villages, municipalities, we're a little different, you know, but I just wanna make sure what's, what you're looking, what you're expecting. Because it's almost, when you get to that point, and you do all those studies, or what you said to the county, the county says, we live in a building from here to here, you know, you've already done all the analysis, all the work, so it's, you know, it's the way the village handles things, that's fine, but I just wanna know what, what we need to do to get it to that point, to get it circulated, so.
Sounds like the parking issue won't be resolved until you do your stormwater management plan.
Potentially, but, you know.
And that's, well, if that gives cost of space-
So, so I think, so, so-
But then the other thing, nobody's talked about, very much about Brandon's comment about reversing the ninety-nine building.
Michael mentioned it.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to see it. It looks like if you really do that, you'd have to get a variance, because you'd be in a setback.
Right.
The building would be in a setback?
Yeah, it would be. It would be in the rear setback at the minimum. I mean, I think it would look much better, but I understand that, you know, that's a choice you have to make, because it does the part of you that goes for variance. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's, that's the comment we needed, that's true. But I, I guess what-
You know, a, a variance with positive input from planning board would be an easier deal than, than otherwise. I'm sorry, George.
I just think that what you're looking for is indication from the planning board is that whether you want that, whether you want them to rearrange it, and go for the variance, and so on, or whether you're satisfied the way it is.
So, when you talk about, just so I'm clear, in terms of moving the building, Brandon's comments, I, from what I read, I thought it was taking the building and putting it up here.
That's what I mean.
So, it's not just swapping this, putting this, put the parking in the back. I mean, really, that doesn't change much, which, from what you see from the streets.
If you, if you could bring the building down to the street front, or close to the street front.
What does it do to the elevations on your building, though? Now, all of a sudden, he's got a three-story building. Whereas here, he's using the hill.
Right, he's using the grade. Okay, fair enough.
I mean, this, again, while the parking lot is back here, and then we have our setback here, if we have, I mean, that building, I mean, in the village, it would be very close to the edge of pavement.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I realize it would, and that might be problematic, given the nature of the road there, and like, curving and stuff.
Coming around, site distance, so forth, like, you know.
Yeah, and it would certainly be noisier for the residents living there, and that's an issue.
Yep.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a trade-off. I, I mean, one of the things that is inevitable, but was of concern to me, is that, given the site of the building, where you're citing it, you're gonna have to do a fair bit of tree cutting, and quite a lot of, of grading. I mean, it, part of it's going right into the edge of, and you could, of the hill, and you can see shale outcrowpings and stuff like that.
Which was exactly what we dug, was up on top.
Yeah, and I'm not just saying it from an engineering point of view, it's also partly aesthetic. So, I guess, as a trade-off, to the extent that you can, landscaping could become extremely important, in terms of how the finished site looks.
Yeah, we, we've provided some landscaping, we've got comments from, from the planner. We could certainly take a look at this, these areas here, to provide for additional buffer now, but nobody's opposed to that.
Yeah, and I, and, you know, considering sightlines, looking down at the front of the building, you know, as you come past it, it's, so that things are somewhat shielded, it would be, you know, and you can, you can take advantage of the hillside to help do some of that. Anyway, I, you made a good point, so I guess that's kind of off the table.
I, I do have, I'll probably make, make some mention about site distance, which, where that proposed shed is, with two parking spaces in front of it, and where the dumpster is proposed, it seems to me that there's the possibility that that would be a problem, as far as site distance is concerned, coming around that corner.
I think what we'll do too, is, I want to make sure we detail on next go-around. As part of the litigation on the back piece with the village, there was actually some traffic analysis, looking at the intersection, and in that, there was some recommendations. And it really kind of came down to pavement markings, and things like that, there's, I don't particularly recall, but I don't think there's a whole lot down there at the stop signs, I don't think there's stop bars, things like that. So, I'm gonna pull that out of the archives, and maybe we can implement some of that here, to try and provide for a little bit more delineation here, which then, coupled with this, this access point, getting rid of the whole big shale, that'll help define that area down. And going to your point, the, the, it sounds to me like the dumpster's out the door, so we don't have to worry about that at this point. And as it relates to the shed, what we can do is, let's, once I locate the stop signs, get a better idea of exactly what's at this intersection, we can show sightlines, you know, at various locations, and we'll have that on there, so it's a record, to make sure that that does not become an issue. If you need to shift that back a little bit, then we'll do that accordingly.
You know, one thing I didn't mention explicitly, or maybe even at all, the purpose of meetings before we send the application to the county and have a public hearing, are generally determination of completeness. And it isn't a matter of going through finding items and so on, that we leave for the public hearing. But this is, this is to make sure that the application's filled out properly, that the site plan is complete and accurate, and that things that might not have been contemplated, such as things that Dave mentioned, are dealt with, so that we can make a submission to the county. So, that's the story. Anything else from, anybody here? Mike, anything else? David? Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Rich, I did say that we would do your pre-application before. David asked if he could just mention something about, something with the towns.
I'm glad to wait, too, because I have no problem waiting.
Okay, okay.
I think, I think these people are here for me.
Oh, are they? It's ten ice. That's great.
I hate to lose an audience.
Your peeps, right, that's good. Okay, so what we have now... I thought they were just public-spirited citizens. Okay, so, Mr. Stephens.
Brogan, you got a note that I stepped back through the board?
Well, we're not gonna take any action. Did, what did you say, George? Does he have to, to leave?
Just sit up front.
Go, go, go to the comfy chairs, Rich.
Yep.
Let me get my stuff here.
Okay, Rich, why don't you, it's not that nice, tell us what you want to do.
Interesting, they were just about the same size parcel that we're just speaking of, only I want to cut it into three single-family lots.
It says two in your application.
Three.
Okay, I'm just telling you, it says two.
It says two!
It does, right there.
Yeah, it won't on the application.
Okay, so you want three.
Each of the lots, none of the lots will be big enough to be two-family in size, so they'll be restricted to one-family house by the size of the lot. They're all included for you, an overview showing what the lots are like in the area. This is, these lots are very similar.
I didn't get, I'm not sure, I didn't get that.
Right here, you did.
Oh, you just gave it to us, thanks.
There is already an existing four-bedroom house on the lot, that will stay.
Side setbacks twelve and a half feet.
Twelve. No variance is needed, meets all setback requirements, meets more than minimum lot size on each of them. Since I'm gonna be utilizing the gray contours that are there, I'd like to be able to get a waiver on the two-foot contours, which we've done on other subdivisions in the past. I'm not gonna be altering the land that much.
You're gonna wave all contours? Is that what you're saying? Wave all contours?
Yes, yep. I'll use the existing contours to build the new house.
What is the contour from the front to back? Is it, is it flat?
There's a, there's a gentle rise up from the road, there's a second rise about halfway through the lot.
So, you want planning board to wave?
Me having to engineer two-foot contours on this lot. I'm not going to be rescaping the land. Building no roads, building no infrastructure, we-
Is the frontage at the bottom of your drawing here?
Yes.
It's Elting.
Clearly. Two questions?
Yep.
What are you, for the eleven thousand square foot one, the one furthest south?
Yep.
What are you doing for a drive, if you don't have that? Be building a driveway?
Yes.
Okay. And also on the narrow one?
Same thing.
Building, not sharing a driveway with the-
No, because then it gets into cross-easements, which I'm really not a big fan. I'll probably run those two side by side.
That'd be nice to not have an additional cut. And the placement, especially on the narrow lot, the, I mean, one of the things driving along Elting is, to me, it's a rather exceptional street in the village, the vernacular of the housing, and the way they're sited.
Yep.
Can you build in such a, I mean, this is a relatively narrow lot, fifty-two feet across, are you gonna be able to build so that the front of the house-
Have you ever seen my house on Caroline Drive?
I have not.
It fits there.
Okay.
Trying to think of other ones I've built around town that would fit there. It takes a twenty-four-foot wide house, two-story. Very similar to, what's your house, twenty-six wide, twenty-eight wide?
I'm not sure. But it's on half an acre, it's right next door.
So, you're saying that the, the front width would be only like twenty-four feet?
Well, you've got fifty-two-foot wide lot.
Right.
Twelve and a half, twelve and a half, and the house will only be twenty-seven feet at max.
Right, right, okay.
I don't push anything to the max, so.
Right, so twenty-four, twenty-five feet across, house goes back to provide space. So, I, yeah, I guess my, my concern really is, is maintaining the aesthetic in the, of that street, which is a variety of different housing types, but, you know, sort of has evolved in a very pleasing way.
I've never been complimented on the way I dress.
But-
But I've built, but I've built some awful nice real estate.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, looking at other houses along there, again, it's a mixture of houses that are close together, and sort of set apart, that's one of the things that makes it interesting.
Michael, it shouldn't matter one iota, in terms of this being approved or disapproved. But I intend to live on the-
No, it doesn't matter at all.
Right. So, I'll just-
And although I-
That answers your question, is aesthetically, is it going to be there? I'm gonna build what I like.
Yeah.
But it may not be what you like.
That, that's not the point. It's, it's actually not a question of my taste, it's a question of, sort of, acknowledging what that street has become, and, and, and designing around it. I, I'd love for you to live another hundred years and, and live there, but, you know, these houses were all built long before I was born, so, yeah, no, that's-
The street is also a mixture, you know?
Oh, absolutely.
There's five or six really beautiful homes.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'm up against two of the ugliest on other block. I don't mind saying that in public, because I mean, the guy just does a lousy job keeping his house up. And across the street, there are three more modern homes, ranch houses in a more contemporary design. Clean, neat, look like family homes, kind of neighborhood I would live in.
Yeah.
Behind me, and behind them, might be a different story in terms of what's out there, but-
Sure. Okay.
Can you build an aesthetically nice house on fifty-foot wide lot? Yes, you can.
Yeah, no, I, that's-
In fact, if, if the village was optimistically developed, there would all be fifty-foot wide lots. And we'd be walking around, and we'd be sitting on the front stoop, talking to our neighbors, and-
Oh, yeah, no, I know they can be built, I just, I'm just putting it out there. And I, and it's not, it's got nothing to do with you, and I'm just, just putting it out there, it's not personal.
No.
How far away do you have to be from a neighbor to talk to them? How, how far would you be from my house?
Well, my grandmother had a stoop, I used to like that when I was a little kid.
Yeah. Okay, so...
Well, you can't take action on it yet, because it's not an application.
Right.
But I am gonna be asking to get those two-foot contour waived. And I would like to start the engineer now. I'd like to get a feel, if that came in, and you saw it wasn't there, we'd really be upset, because I don't wanna send them back again.
Well, you know, I'm not familiar with what that means. What, what, what basis do we have to waive a contour?
Well, interesting, it's one of the few things on the, on the subdivision checklist that says, is that your discretion?
Yeah.
Right, but, but in, in order to do it, what, what would be the rationale that would say that we-
That there's no significant change in topography on the land, that it's essentially flat. I mean, I don't know.
Change in topography, or?
No change.
There's no slope of any concern, there's no, or the reason to waive it would be, that we know that the, that the area is flat, or to say, you don't need two-foot, you need ten-foot or something. Which, if it's ten-foot, it sounds like there would just be one line across there, no, no more.
And that you're not planning to regrade, to any extent?
I'm not planning any regrade.
Right.
The, the house that's there now is built into those contours.
Right.
I'm just gonna do the same thing.
Well, it would seem to me to be a benefit to not regrade, benefit to everything, but-
But the, the other two houses that you would put on the lot, if you're breaking it up into three lots instead of two, what do you do with the dirt for the, where are you gonna, is that gonna go offside?
There isn't a lot of dirt coming out. My house, I'm intending on a crawl space. There's not a lot of dirt being moved off the lot.
So, it would be moved off the lot, not-
If not needed, it would be moved off, but it's not, there's not gonna be a lot of dirt coming out.
Well, if you take dirt out, and you don't take it off the lot, then you're regrading.
Yes.
And if you're regrading, then wouldn't you want to show contours? And how you're changing the contours?
But I don't intend to do that, so I can't show you what. There's really no reason to do it. I, I'd be happy to go over to the lot with you and show you, but-
So, it might be a site-
It's not, it's not like we're, we're moving a mountain here. It's not like I'm having to, you know, cut through anything here.
So, Rich, you, you said that you were building a house to live in, right, on-
Yeah, I'm just trying to make it clear.
No, I, I understand that.
I don't want that to prejudice you.
No, 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 there's no prejudice here. But, and the other house, the other lot, were you gonna build something on right away also?
No.
Okay.
I don't want that to prejudice you.
No, 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 there's no prejudice here. But, and the other house, the other lot, were you going to build something on right away also?
No.
Okay. But it will be a built-up lot, so...
It will be a built-up lot. What it does is stops the lot next door from becoming a two-family.
Yes, I understand.
Now...
Or, or a multi-family.
My daughter's got a baby due in April. I get to be a grandfather. Would I love to have her two doors down? You bet it would. You think I'll be able to move over here? No way.
Right.
Anyway, I have no problem.
I don't want to read the future on that one.
Right. No, 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 no. If there's any...
I have no problem with the contour issues. That's fine.
So I'm sorry I had a bathroom break here that I didn't hear the first part of it. So your application says two lots to be created, so obviously now it's changed to three lots.
Two new lots.
That's my dyslexia. I was thinking two new lots. There's one house there already.
Right.
Which brings me to the question of recreation. Do I pay a recreation on three lots or two lots?
Say that again?
I'd have to read the code again and not, not sure.
Any subdivision under recreation?
No, it's a question of whether it's on...
How many lots? You can't just do...
He's creating two new lots, so does he pay on two lots or does he pay on three lots? Because that's what you're ending up with. That's, and...
There's one lot now.
Right.
I would think it's two.
So it's going to make it into three, that's three, three lots.
Well, the logic of rec fees is that when you create new lot, you bring new families into the area that need recreation facilities. So if you're creating two new lots, those two families, because you've only got one family there. Now that, that can be changed by the law, but...
I have to look at the wording of the law.
You have to look at it again. I haven't done that for a while.
Yeah.
Okay, so... Do you have any other questions of us or anything else you would like from us?
I'd like to know if there's any questions from these people behind me. I mean, obviously they came tonight concerned. If you have any problem with that, I'd... Let's hear them now before this is a public hearing.
Well, it's not a public meeting, but if, if, if you would like to use this to, to hear them, that's fine.
I don't think we want to waive the public hearing on...
You will not.
Oh, you're not waiving that?
I can't.
About dirtiness and...
No.
We just came to hear about what the plans were at this point. We all live on the street.
Right.
We're concerned and, um, but three, you know, we've seen what's happened with the gen count four and other, other, other decisions in the neighborhood. And as you said, Elting Avenue is, is, is a street that's unique in the village in a certain way. And we're interested in, you know, holding on to that in some ways. And we want to make sure we all have kids and that traffic's, you know, not going to be a problem. This is, we've seen it happen too many times, you know, where it turns into a college situation or college housing and that can change your street. So we're just appearing in how at this point.
We want to stay in the community with our kids and on this street, which we have such a great lifestyle.
Good.
And that's all.
The continuity is certainly a concern at this point. I think, you know, given the lot sizes, what's there now, the, and how it works, so it's certainly interesting that it could be now changing.
Yeah, I, it's like, I wanted to talk too. And we're, we're just so, everyone on the street is very curious about what's going to be happening with this lot. And, and we're glad Rich wants to live on the street. That makes us, that makes us happy.
Please understand that I want to be here tomorrow, but I may not be here tomorrow.
And, uh, you know, but, you know, we also, you know, the village master plan, you know, says that neighborhoods should be able to maintain their, their character. And we like our neighborhood and we like our street a lot, you know, and, and that, that... You said it's really different, the different, the lot sizes vary a lot on the street, but the, the average block frontage of that side of the street is over a hundred feet. Right, so all the houses on that side are all big lots. Houses on the other side are small lots, so you can vary it up. If you want to maintain a continuity of the way that street looks, you, you should try to keep what that, that block looks like. And the block frontage, my understanding is that they go by the sides of the street, not the, that general neighborhood. So that side of the street are big houses on big lots. I live on the other side of the street in a small lot. So I like small lots. But I'm just saying, we're concerned and we like the way the neighborhood looks and we, we would, we're, we're happy that we have some, some chance for input tonight. We'd like that to be, that this neighborhood is very, very concerned. And we're, we just don't want things to, to slip by.
And everybody on the street would have been here if they could. Everybody on the street is concerned. It's not just us, we're just represented, but every single household.
Including the nine?
Including the nine. They're, they're ready.
Comment on the request to waive the engineering...
Topo.
...uh, contour. The village recently spent, I don't know how much money, uh, cutting and repaving the street in front of my house and the, the second house, number thirty-eight, right, right behind you. Because the drainage on the street that comes downhill from his property all the way down is, is not sufficient. You know, the storm drains don't handle that. Adding three lots on a hillside that is really complete shale without some sort of plan for the driveways and the foundations, et cetera, to me is, is asking for more trouble and more expense to the village.
You mean adding, adding impervious?
That's what they, that's what they put. Yeah, they had to cut out a four-foot wide section, I don't know, a hundred feet long and repave it.
Right.
And the, the village did, and they did several other repairs in different sections of the village at the, at the same time. But still, that's expense to the village. And here's a, here's a situation where this gentleman wants to, uh, build two additional properties and waive the engineering for the, where the drainage goes. I don't understand that.
No, that's...
No, 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 that's not what I'm reading, that's what... I still have to go through, um... Hopefully we'll have a lot changed and I'll have to come through the planning board eventually for these houses. But I still got the building inspectors to go through, um, in terms of renovation. This is to give them a picture of what the land looks like. The contours of that land, like there's a ridge and shale.
Right.
And all I'm saying is that I'm going to build with that contour. I'm not going to change the contour, so they don't have to take a look at what was before and what's going to be after. It'll be the same contour.
Well, since it's that level, I don't see how you can not change it to build a house. Because otherwise the house will be total.
The house could be...
No, no, well, the foundation in the front will be different from the foundation in the back. We'll build right in the side of the lot.
But just to be clear, there wouldn't be any sort of basement, it'd be a crawl space.
Right.
Which would mean that it could be a standardized kind of home. It just, but it could be a mobile home at that point. I mean, not saying that you're going to put a mobile home, but essentially it could be a home that just sits there without any sort of, any sort of basement at all in that area, which is definitely different than any other houses on the street.
Everybody has basements?
As far as I know, everybody has basement problems too. But, but...
So I don't think I have a basement.
But that doesn't mean they don't have basements. They definitely all have basements. I mean, not, you know, I don't know what the code is on that, but it's...
There's two raised ranches on either end of the street.
Right. Right, dude.
At least those two don't have basements.
Right. So is that the...
So it's not everywhere.
No, it would be similar, except it looks too...
And it wouldn't make sense to put a basement into a lot if the basement was going to be wet.
Right. But the concern is, I think, that the houses on the other street will have the basements.
Wait, 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 guys, wait, wait. You haven't even said what you're going to do and so on and, you know, I, you said you want to live there. You said you're going to build a nice house and that it will be in character. That sounds great, you know, and we go along the process and we can, you know, see how it goes and so on and, and, you know...
They can't approve this based on that.
Right, exactly, yeah.
They're going to approve it just based on the fact that here's the land.
That's right. That's right. So let's keep...
It just seems like three lots successful. Why not divide it into two and keep the frontage the same as all the other houses on that side of the street?
Yeah.
Why not make it like the houses on the other side of the street?
Because it's not on the other side of the street. The, the definition of block frontage is, is the houses on that side of the street.
And it disrupts the continuity in the neighborhood with that street, of course.
Well, Maureen, somebody asked me that question before and I responded that, that making the lot with the little gray house that big, makes that a two-family lot. I don't understand why you're going to do that. Because that's not... I mean, I've, you know... I don't agree with that.
Well, Rich, what we're here for is to hear your plan. And you have asked if we would be inclined to waive the contour requirement.
Yes.
And you've heard from Michael that he would. Rich, do you have a...
I, I think because of, that we might want to ask that question and get guidance from the building department because of the impervious, you're changing the amount of, of, of property that is impervious. And if that would then make a difference in the drainage. Even though you're not changing the contours, you're just digging a hole, you're still making a change to what will soak up water and what won't. And therefore it would change the drainage. So I would, based on that, I would say, I think you're better off asking for a topo.
Ask for...
The contour.
Not to wave.
Not to wave.
Okay.
I thought you said ask the building inspector.
Well, but my other, the other portion of my answer is that we might want to defer to the building inspectors and the building department and say, or the consulting engineer and say, do you think that it's a big enough issue or not? I'm not a drainage expert.
Shooting the contours doesn't tell you anything about runoff from eventual development. That's a completely separate issue. I'm not going to change the lot size. All I'm saying is that we're not going to change the topography. We're not going to go and cut out the side of a mountain or fill in a...
But if you put something, if you put a house there...
But that's when the house goes on, not during the subdivision. There is no house there.
But the question in the code is whether topographic conditions are significant.
Right.
If they are, you have to have the contours. If they're not, you don't.
Right.
So the question is whether they're significant. And I guess what you're suggesting is that maybe, uh, they're significant if the new impervious surface is going to create runoff. Does it require a site visit or somebody to go out and look at this?
Isn't that, isn't that something that happens during the...
Site plan?
During the site, no, is there a site plan? The way things are now, there is...
No, there'd just be a subdivision analysis, but, um... You know, you're not, you're creating, there'd be a, there'd be a spacer. Is this all, uh, this is city water and, yeah, village water and village.
Yeah. Yeah.
There've been people in this neighborhood who paved their driveways and did not do drainage studies.
Sure.
I don't think there's a drainage study required. First, location of existing proposed sewers, water drains, including pipe seismic type drains, direction of flow, ownerships, stormwater retention facilities. Those things would be in here. You're, you're going to do everything else in this list, right? All the detail for preliminary plan.
Where they are applicable. I'm not putting any streets in.
No, no.
Not putting any lighting in.
You're not putting a sewer, you're not putting...
Not even putting sewers in, no?
Drains, you're not putting piping. Hook a bar? Hook a bar?
Well, I just think having a topo at the beginning of what your existing conditions are will help you in the long run, um, to figure out where your drainage goes or, or what runoff issues you might have.
There's a storm drain right in the front of the driveway for number fifty-six. So I intend to tie whatever footing drains are necessary into that storm drain.
You're not allowed to put footing drains into a storm drain anymore?
Since when?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's roof drains. Roof drains. My mistake.
Is it, is it a big process to get a topo?
No, it's just plenty. It's just plenty. For, you know, what's, what's pretty wasteful on...
David, I know we're not paying you for this, but do you have any, anything you could add to this?
How much shale is out there? I mean, I, we're talking about...
Enough that I can't put a basement on there.
We're talking about how much infiltration you might give to the soil compared, you know, it's the difference between a roof and, and how much infiltration will the soil take?
Shale's within eighteen inches to two feet of the topsoil from where I dumped it.
What kind of soil was on top of that?
It's actually pretty good. They must have brought some fill into the front section of the lot at one point. Now, we're only doing it with a small, little sheet. But it's open down and then it's also, it's shale.
You can certainly make that calculation once you know the footprint of the house and the driveway.
I think that since the shale there and the infiltration is already bad, this is only going to exacerbate poor drainage that's already there.
So David, am I correct in, in understanding what you're saying? We can always ask for it after we find out what the footprint is?
I think you could ask for it anytime, don't you, George? I mean, it's a condition as long as you don't waive it earlier.
So the only purpose of a footprint is to know if you can fit within the setbacks, which I think you can.
Well, and, and also find out how much impervious area you're creating.
What is actually... Unless it comes in through seeker. I don't see it in the requirements for preliminary plan.
I mean, I am doing the subdivision without a building plan.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It just doesn't require that you show the building or show the drainage from the building or anything like that.
Some of it doesn't exist.
I mean, I think it's a, it'd last be big enough to hold a house physically. And it, it is, obviously, fifty feet wide.
You would be amazed what could be built there.
What are the setbacks, are it ten feet or what?
Sorry, what?
What is that? What are the setbacks?
Twelve and a half side, twenty-five front and rear.
Twenty-five, okay. Seeing that twenty-five to half.
On, on, on a narrow lot, yeah.
On a narrow lot.
Well, it is a subdivision that we're talking about, not houses at this point.
Right.
Yeah. Sorry, can we, can we just ask a question?
Sure.
Sorry, I'm out of the center of the table here. I appreciate you giving us, inviting us into, into the conversation. Just so I'm clear, like, it sounded like the rule is if you waive it now, you can't even have that right to bring it back. If it was...
We can't waive anything tonight.
Oh, okay.
We can't take any action tonight. This is a, a pre-application meeting to, to just air the issues and you can get a sense of what some of us are thinking. But nothing is binding. There's no action. There's nothing like that.
But also, this, the village either has the law now or it's about to have a law that every house has to go through site plan. So although the subdivision may be approved, the design of the house, which would involve impervious surface and drainage issues, I think, will go through a different process, a site plan hearing. So you'll have another bite at the apple.
No, I just appreciate you explaining the process. Thank you.
We're also working on design standards, but...
Probably not until...
I'll build it before that happens.
I didn't think that was going to affect the single family houses.
I would think it should affect everything.
Maybe. Okay.
You good?
Thank you, Rich. You can come back now.
Okay, I'm back.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thanks again very much.
Note, Dave wants to... You have to stay. Questions, you have my pen.
There you go. That's why I have a pen.
All right, good.
Rover, do you have a key to the door?
I gotta get into that.
I think she does. Did you have a hall pass, Rich? Huh? Did you have a hall pass? You get the hall pass?
This is Woodland Pond, which is right over here. Museum School was right back here.
You guys don't happen to have a key to this hallway here?
I don't. No, we just. The town owns this parcel. Sunset Ridge. So that they purchased for open space, I'll say, five years ago now, something. This is 68 acres that the owner is offering to the town. Part of it. It's actually, the zoning line comes right through this stream. This piece he would like to offer to the town, this piece would be retained. And so the question was, can this be done as a lot line change? This line here.
Which we're doing.
This property line, it's a common property line between the town's property and this parcel.
Which is village. Right, this is village.
All of it's village, right?
This is village.
It's all village.
It's owned by the town, but it's.
Oh, it's all owned by the village. The town owns the piece, but it's in the village.
So town would get, I guess it's about 30 acres there, 30, 35 acres.
To own, not to add.
To own.
Right.
Same as this.
Yes.
They own that. To do that, there's a lot line change would make it simple.
Why not? Looks fine to me. Is there some reason not to do it? Is this line completely going to disappear over here? Or is it going to be broken in here somewhere?
I think it's going to go all the way out.
Well, that would be important, but you'd have to be able to merge this lot totally with that lot.
The line would be right here.
Right.
They're talking about taking out one line and adding another.
Right.
Take this one out.
All right.
Swing it over here. This is the maximum zoning line change here.
Who's going to follow the zoning line?
Well, I was hoping it would, but the way the zoning line looks in the code, it kind of follows a stream.
That's too bad. That would be a terrible.
They're just going to.
Yeah, why, why aren't they just going east of the wetland? Why is the owner donating a portion of the wetland?
I think the, the idea was the zoning piece, but I'm not sure, Mike.
Oh, you mean in terms of, in terms of the dense, having enough square footage?
Just they thought that was a place to break it right where the zone changed.
Oh, I didn't, I missed that point. Oh, it's two different zones?
Yeah.
Oh.
And the zone goes right down the creek, oh, down the wetland?
Yeah, the way it's shown on the.
I think from a development point of view, they would have a much easier time if they would bring that line further east, because then they don't have to worry about a buffer in that area. I know they're probably not going to build that far into the lot, but if they don't need that.
They, meaning?
The people who want to build on that property ultimately, whether it's the current owner or the developers who've been looking at it. If they would reconsider and just take part of that, I mean, the zoning becomes irrelevant once the town takes it over as open space.
Right.
Yeah, so I would, I would urge them to move the line further east and completely take it out of that major section of the wetland.
You put it here?
No.
No, east is at home.
You said east.
Yeah.
You want to come over or?
So that they're completely out of the wetland buffer or the designated wetland area. I realize this will probably still be in it, but I think that doesn't matter.
This is a DEC wetland?
I think this is not mapped.
It's due, it depends on your ask. Probably not.
We don't have a village wetland laws.
No. No, we don't, but I can tell you, given the history of this area, that anybody who wants to build around there is going to have to stay away from it. Because what we do have is we have a, a plan for the entire 300-plus acres that the town and village are considering for approving. They've accepted it, and it makes clear that you should stay out of, that you should do a minimum 100-foot buffers in all these wetlands.
Looks like it's a 12 acres, but maybe add a little bit.
This connects the more.
There's a lot more wetlands.
So, so even though it's not mapped, it would be jurisdictional wetland probably for DEC.
Maybe. They have, they've been reluctant to get involved in it.
Yeah, they always are.
But if they're forced into it, they'll recognize that they would have jurisdiction. They've always taken a position that even if it's not mapped, if it qualifies, it's considered jurisdictional for them.
So moving this line over 100 feet.
Yeah, I mean, that's not the question you came to ask, but I'm just, I think if, if the town's willing to do it and the owner is, I think that would be, it would make their lives much easier coming, when they bring a plan forward.
Is it to be open space? Is that what the purchase is for, open space funds?
Is it donated or is it, you don't know?
It's not donated. I don't know what the cost is, and now they've been doing grazes on it.
Right. Yeah, now this would be through the open space fund, I'll tell you that.
Amazing site, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gorgeous.
I don't see any reason you can't do a lot line adjustment.
Seems sensible.
You'd make it simple.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave. Good, I'm glad something's happening with that.
So I guess, just to go back, I shouldn't have done this well. Mr. Caffrey's here, but at what point? We have to wait until their next submission for Dave to review that, right? Yeah, so we'll see.
Okay. I guess we didn't say that happened in two weeks or anything?
No, it's, it's whenever he has it, and then we'll send a meeting based on that. Thank you, David. Oh, all right, I got my pen back, you can go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, George.
So we don't have a forum right now.
No, we don't. It's like Rich left for good.
I don't know. Because he was having some rework.
All right, yeah, no, he took his stuff, so I think he's.
You can say that, you do a lot to me, I appreciate that.
I guess we skip the.
We're still going.
I will, I will.
We're, we're, we're waiting for.
Kind of do a little.
Please to come back.
You're going to skip the design standards?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want Brent to be here for that.
Yeah, I agree.
Talk among yourself, Ellen.
Talk among yourself.
I was.
How are you?
Good, good.
Be all right.
I'm sorry she can't appear.
Yeah, I'm sorry too. But at least you're okay there. It'd be hell without you.
Yeah. Got your shirt.
Terrance, I got your email.
Oh, goodie. Is that, don't you love modern technology?
Yeah.
Instant foil. Like, wow, I want to see those.
Yeah, I'm wondering if I need to give you a foil, foil request or if I can just send you.
You know, I, I wasn't sure what your policy was. I know at other times in the village and the town, I've been able to submit requests by email, but whatever worked with your process is fine by me. If you want me to fill out a form, just let me know. It's a brutal two and a half block walk.
All right.
Today's weather, today's a winter.
Okay.
I'll leave you tomorrow.
Figure it out, Mike needs it.
Yeah. Okay, so is this sitting back?
I'm not sure, he's still trying to.
Probably not trying to get his breath back, okay. Okay, so we have some minutes, and Brent has asked for motions to close out some planning board accounts. And they are the following. Woodland Pond, really?
Basically, everything since I started, I just wanted.
Oh, my gosh.
You've got all the i's and crossed the t's on, on all the paperwork.
Okay, so. Why does it say PB 1402?
Remember they wanted sunrooms on the cottages?
Yes.
That was this year?
That was this year.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah.
It was approved this year.
Time flies.
Started, started the year before.
Then why doesn't it have a PB 13 number?
I think it's written right in January.
Maybe. I trust Brent.
Me too.
My memory, yeah.
I do.
Okay, yeah, there's Town and Country condos. 46 Church Street. Okay, so the, the net result is, I will read the application numbers and the names, but the net result is that these, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven projects, right? Have, have been completed by us or have, is there one that was never seen by us? No, these are all, okay, so these are all applications that we have dealt with. And Brogan has investigated with anybody who might have been paid through the escrow account, that they have been paid everything that they were due. So we are now looking to close the escrow accounts. So may I have a motion to close the escrow accounts for PB 1402, which are the Woodland Pond sunrooms, PB 1403, which are the Town and Country condo decks that were done, PB 1307, which is the 46 Church Street property, I forgot what that was all about.
John Johnson?
Yeah, I know it's John Johnson, but what was the?
Oh, where he wanted a converted brick.
Yeah, yeah, he wanted to do a lot of stuff and he just went away.
Right.
He had had enough of us, okay. PB 1304 is the Floyd Niffin lot line alteration, which we did. PB 1403 is 51 Main Street. And 51 Main Street.
Isn't that the Yonkers?
Yeah, now why is that, oh, that's right, we did finish that, right? Okay. PB 1401 is Rock and Snow, and PB 1405 is the Water Street Cinema. And he did withdraw that.
Yep. You went through the application.
And he.
Water Street Cinema was withdrawn?
Yes.
Yep.
So may I have a motion to close out those escrow accounts?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
It's a good thing. Strobe hands, who's in favor of that? Okay, we're all in favor. Motion passes, thank you very much, Brogan, for all your, your work. And I guess we don't have to do anything with this. Oh, come on, Michael, stop. It's not fair, it's just not fair.
I, yeah.
I'm not allowed to, you can't either.
Fair enough. They're up long before me, probably.
I would say that's probably true. Okay. And this, why do I have this thing?
Oh, this is going to be a ZBA thing?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's two weeks, in two weeks.
We'll deal with them, right.
So just minutes?
We have some minutes, which will turn into hours and days and so on. So. May I have a motion to adopt the draft planning board meeting minutes of October 21st, 2014?
So.
Second.
Spence was killing it.
I'm sorry.
Is there any further discussion, any comments or amendments or changes to that?
Nope.
Hearing none, may I have a vote, all those in favor of approving those?
Aye.
Aye, that's that. May I have a motion to adopt the draft planning board minutes for the November 4th, 2014? We attempted some.
Second.
Thank you, Michael, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
Second, thank you, all in favor? I want to keep going, okay, well.
Aye.
Thank you, aye, aye, aye. Thank you very much. Close.
There it is.
You want to experience some really heavy.